I'm ready to go. I'm here for the Garden City. And find my nature.
Yeah.
Like a kid. And never feel forced to act.
Okay, it's six. You're late. Are we ready to go? Okay. Okay, you all ready? Or not?
Yep.
You're not? Thank you for joining us this evening for the 2023 Garden City Community College Board of Trustees Candidate Forum hosted by the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber of Government Affairs Committee. We would first like to thank the city of Garden City for hosting us this evening and providing technology assistance. I am Laura Blake-Bohr, Chairperson of the Chamber of Government Affairs Committee and will serve as the moderator for this evening's forum. Joining me to help keep track of time is Micah Bunch, President of the Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we welcome the following candidates vying for a seat on the Garden City Community College Board of Trustees: Anhelica Castillo-Chapel, Jean Clifford, David Rupp, Sean Sheets, and Shanda Smith. Candidates, thank you for joining us this evening. The process for tonight's forum will begin with each candidate providing a one-minute opening statement, followed by a question-and-answer session, and will conclude with a one-minute closing statement. Each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds to respond to each question. There will be a buzzer at the end of your time in case if you're running close to that. This is a closed-question forum; no rebuttal questions or answers will be permitted. Our candidate order for tonight's forum was randomly selected. Without further delay, let us begin our forum with the one-minute opening statements. Anhelica, we will start with you.
Thank you. I came to Garden City at a young age and have since called Garden City home. Garden City Community College collaborated with me as a non-traditional student to further my education. And because of their partnerships, I was able to further my education where I finished my bachelor's. Since then, I've been able to make an impact in my community through my full-time work at Valley State Bank and numerous nonprofit organizational work. Garden City has been my home for 35 years. As an immigrant and proud American citizen, I feel a passion for helping those who face barriers in attaining the education they need to succeed. As a GCCC trustee, my goal would be to serve all the citizens of our community, including those among us who have little or no voice. This is our college, and I believe everyone should have a seat at the table focused on serving as a trustee, because I want our community's college to help every person reach his or her greatest potential as a member of our society and a part of the economy that we share. Thank you.
Thank you. Shanda.
Thank you to the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce for arranging this and working with the city to provide us this opportunity to introduce ourselves to you all. And thank you to the community members that are here in person and those that are watching It says a lot that you take your time to be a part of this. I'll start by introducing myself and telling you a little bit about me. My name is Shanda Smith. I was born here in Garden City, and together with my husband, we operate Skeeter's Body Shop. Our children are grown, and most have taken classes or gotten a degree from Garden City Community College. I have my bachelor's and my master's degree in business administration from West Texas A&amp;M University. I've always been passionate about education and serving our students. My time and dedication to the students of Garden City Community College began about a decade ago with my involvement in the Endowment Association. Our focus there was really raising scholarship funds to make education feasible for anybody who wanted it. That scared me. Sorry.
I'll let you finish your next sentence.
I've always said that these students, to be their best, must give them, we must give them our best as an institution as well as a community.
Thank you. Thank you. Jean.
I am Jean Clifford, and I'm running for trustee. I believe that the college is critically important to the future successes of our students and our economy. I bring a broad background of experience and service to the position of trustee as a four-year member of the Kansas State Board of Education, a 10-year member of the Garden City Board of Education, a Kansas-certified teacher, an adjunct college instructor, a member of the Cultural Relations Board, the Arts and Humanities Council, YMCA, ZU, 4H, and the Kansas Health Institute, among others. I have a bachelor's degree in education, a master's degree in special education, and a doctorate in law. I'm a retired Air Force officer and attorney with over 30 years of service and have been married to Dr. Bill Clifford for over 40 years. We have six children, all of whom have attended Garden City Community College, as have I. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. David.
I am David Rupp and running for the Garden City Community Board of Trustees. I was born and raised in Garden City in southwest Kansas. I have attended and graduated from the college. I've been involved in the community for a good portion of my life, starting with helping fill sunbags for the flood in 1965, and also helped cleaning up after the tornado in '67. Served as a police officer for the city of Garden City for 23 years, and also an instructor at the college for 10 years. Was also active in J.C.'s and helped build the sidewalk along Jenny Barker Road after a child was hit by a car. On the Three-I Committee for over 30 years, and also on city boards. I'm currently on the advisory board for the Department of Public Safety at the college and liaison for the Fannie County Economic Development Board. I've served on the board for the last four years. Public service is in my blood, and I wish to continue my service to this wonderful community.
Thank you. Sean.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming here. My name is Sean Sheets. I live in, I was born and raised in Texas, came up here in Kansas. I've lived here in Holcomb since '02. I've been on the school board in Holcomb for three terms. My daughter and son have both graduated from, are going to attend Garden City Community College. I've had five children. One graduated from Washburn, one graduated from K-State. But I believe, like I said, I'm running for the Board of Trustees. I greatly appreciate everybody being here. And I graduated, and I'm a prodigy of junior colleges. That's how I got my education. I was fortunate enough to play basketball in Tulsa University, in Tulsa, so, but no, I appreciate everybody being here. Thank you all.
Thank you, candidates. We will now transition to the question-and-answer portion of tonight's forum. As previously stated, each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds for each question. If you need me to repeat the question, please let me know. Shanda, we will start with you. Why did you decide to be a candidate for the trustee board, and why should voters elect you?
Why goes back to what I was saying about my passion for education and making sure that every student of any age, of any background that wants an education can find a way to meet their academic goals. It's inspiring to watch a student achieve their educational goals and even be a small part of it, whether it's through the endowment or hopefully continuing my work as a trustee. Our community gives very generously to the community college and other worthy institutions. And I think it's important that as a trustee, we safeguard those resources that they trust us with. And that's not an easy job, nor is it simple. It does take a lot of reviewing, and that's important to me that we do that, set the budgets, and expand to meet our community's needs in the most fiscally responsible way. With this in mind, I think Garden City Community College and the community do well at collaborating for a successful growth in our community. Thank you.
Jean.
I decided to run for the Garden City Community College Board of Trustees because I believe that education is very important in the success of our students and in the success of our economy. Garden City has grown incredibly during my time here, and I'd like to see that continue. I think that training and education is absolutely critical to maintaining a workforce for business and industry, for the growth of this area. It's important to our community. I believe I have a good background that's consistent with those ideas in terms of being on the local school board for a substantial period of time as well as on the state board of education. I think that helping, having that knowledge will help with the transition of students from the high school into the college, as well as reaching out to adult learners and to those that didn't have the opportunity for this advanced training. I think that it's very important that we continue to seek the, meeting the needs of the business and industry here and to grow with the trends that we see, for instance, in the STEM education new building. So I'd like to participate in that, and that's my comment.
David.
Like you said earlier, I've been on the board for four years, and again, I'm interested in maintaining the community and the college partnerships. And also, the main thing for us as trustees is the successful students. And we need to provide all kinds of education for all types of students, and that's why we brought on the STEM building, the crop production, increased John Deere. And I'm very proud of the success we've had over the last four years. I decided to run again because the first four years, you do a lot of learning. And hopefully, in the second four years, I can be elected and we can gain more from the community and the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean.
Repeat the question, please.
Why did you decide to be a candidate for the trustee board, and why should voters elect you?
I've served on the school board in Holcomb for three terms, and we've completed and we work closely with the Garden City Community College and helps our students. Being elected, I would be able to bring some of that knowledge of being on the school board in Holcomb and a personal long and bring it to the Board of Trustees. I could help change the, you know, they've done a great job. Dr. Ruda's done a phenomenal job out there bringing back the tech programs, but we can implement some of the more to the local school districts. We don't just serve the Holcomb Garden City. We serve the Scott City. We serve the supply, we serve the surrounding area. And I think I could help bring, bridge some of those gaps. Thank you.
Anhelica.
I'm very passionate about Garden City. I'm involved with young women that pursue their higher education through a scholarship program. Garden City Community College has been a partner with the Garden City Fiesta Scholarship Page for the last 20 years. I'm very passionate about the students in the community. As a trustee, I will provide effective educational opportunity for everyone in our community, regardless of background or income level. I will prioritize budgeting with an emphasis on value for taxpayers and success for GCCC students. I will help enhance and expand existing opportunities for transfer and access to bachelor degree programs, as it was done to me. I will help exceed the workforce education to meet the employee needs of Fannie County and southwest Kansas. We have such a diverse community, and to have representatives of that community at the table is important. To be the voice for those is important, and that's why I decided to serve. Thank you.
Jean. The Garden City Community College Trustees utilize policy governance as its model for board governance. Please discuss your views of the policy governance model.
I do believe that the policy governance model has worked very well for the past nearly 30 years that it's been in existence with the, with the college. The policy governance model allows the trustees to determine the ends that we want to reach in the college and establish the limitations on the executive in how that is going to be reached. I think it's a very effective model, and there is also an ability to examine the effectiveness through the internal and external auditing, as well as direct inspection by the trustees. So we really have a good assessment of whether we are meeting the needs that the trustees have determined based on the needs of our community and our business and industry. Thank you.
David.
I've been associated with the policy.
I think you need to turn around. Sorry.
I've been associated with the policy governance method the last four years. Like Jean says, it's the ends, or you could say policies, is what we determine as a board. We have one employee, which is the president, and he has to make sure that the ends are met. He does a very good job at doing that. We have our policy governance book highlighted with the Higher Learning Commission, so we know that everything meets the standard for accreditation. Now, the only thing I, I don't like is that we cannot interfere in some of the things on, that may be happening on campus. We can get complaints from the citizens, or we can get accommodations from the citizens, and we can pass them on to the president and then follow through with that. So it's really not much difference from, say, the city commission type of running the city. So I believe it helps. It's standard. Nobody, they only have one voice they have to answer to as far as the faculty and staff, and they don't have to answer to all five or six of us, so it's a good policy.
Thank you. Sean.
Being on the board, we have to listen to our superintendent. He gives us rebuttals, and we go, like you said, on the trustees, it's more or less, it's defined by the president, and he gives us a scope, it's a broader scope of rules and regulations that follows too. Like I said, David and Jean both rebutta, had a nice rebuttal. We can't take complaints. It's the president's responsibility. It's his employment, and it's his responsibility, you know? Being here on the board, and we get scopes and, and understanding all the rules and regulations and stuff, but we're here for advisory and not for being responsible for the total end. We're just here for being responsible and making sure the rules and regulations are followed. Thank you.
Anhelica.
I've been involved in our boards. I believe the advantage of a policy governance is that we're caught up in the decision that our CEO and its leaders are to make. We're here to support them as a board. That's really all I have.
Shanda.
The utilization of policy governance also elicits a lot of different views, but what it means for us is that the focus is on the, on the ends, not the means. That's the president and the administration's role. The president is our only employee, as David mentioned, and it's our responsibility to set expectations and monitor that performance. So we use the policies to set expectations of what the ends should be. These policies rotate for the president's monitoring reports that are provided. Those reports demonstrate how the president and his team achieved through the means to justify our ends. Following the review of these reports provided by President Ruda, we review the policy the next month and see if there are any adjustments that need made on what the policy is, whether the policy was met, and we vote and adjust policies as needed based on the monitoring reports we receive.
Thanks. Thank you. Next question. As a board, it is important to speak as a voice of one. How will you convey information to the public if the decision of the board differs from how you voted on a particular item? David, we'll start with you.
You're right. It's very important to be the voice of one. And my thought on that is if I receive something or I disagree with something, that's going to be discussed when we vote on whatever subject that is up before us. Then it becomes the chairman's job to be our voice. I don't have a problem speaking out against something. I played the devil's advocate several times over the last four years, and it doesn't always go my way, but again, we're the voice of one. We have to stand that way, or we cannot successfully run the college and be accountable for our stakeholders, which is the communities that we serve. Thank you.
Sean.
Can you repeat the question, please?
As a board, it is important to speak as a voice of one. How will you convey information to the public if the decision of the board differs from how you voted on a particular item?
Always, it happens a lot in different boards. Sometimes it's just when you have a person come up and they have a complaint, you listen to it, and they have advisories, you say, you know, you pass, you don't pass the buck, you listen to them, and you, you vote differently. It happens. You always can say, this is the way I voted, and this is the way I understand that you were wanting me to vote, or I understand what I wanted to vote it for. But as far as going in there and being, and telling people and doing that, that's more or less, it's, you can explain it to them why you did vote that way, but it's, it's their priority, and you're still going to have complaints toward you, but it's just one of those things that happens. So that's primarily listening to your people that voted you in.
Anhelica.
That's a hard one. Communication is the key, I think, to every board and understanding what others vote for or against. It should be an understanding of yours as well, but when the community approaches you, and I go through this a lot as I represent other boards, it's important that regardless of my personal beliefs, that I support the decision of the board, and we should be a team and act as one.
Shanda.
Generally, our spokesperson is the chair of the board, and we have really spent a lot of time over the last four years developing a handbook for each of us to use. That helps make sure we're all on the same page on how the process works. We've utilized some resources of the Association of Community College Trustees to really build a more cohesive team that has allowed us to disagree and still walk away respectfully with one, one decision. So it's been really important that we bring six different opinions to the table, but we leave with one decision. Thank you.
Jean.
I would agree. Speaking as a voice of one is important. I think it's important for being transparent to the community so that they understand the position of the board and they understand what is being discussed. I think our strength as a board would be in our diversity. We can have disagreements that are thoroughly and respectfully discussed, and we can learn from each other and see different perspectives. But once a decision is made by the board, that decision is owned by all of the trustees, and it is our obligation to support it. Thank you.
Sean, this next question will start with you. What can you tell us about the college's financial position, and what are your views on the college's financial management practices?
They do keep a very reasonably priced tuition for the students. As far as the financials on the college, not really familiar with all of them. I know they do a phenomenal job, and they, I'm on the athletic board, and we see that. So on the athletic side, we see their books and very lucrative. I mean, it's a profitable business, and I mean, the college is a good, is in good shape physically and financially, and like I said, we need to at least change it, but as far as the financials, I do not have any idea.
And Anhelica.
I don't have much knowledge of the financials either, but with students and teachers in mind, I feel like the college is doing a great job of allocating funds, and they're appropriate to help balance for the needs of the college. Since the money comes from the taxpayers, I think they're doing a phenomenal job. I feel like we can do better with stakeholders and reaching out for more money to come in so that we can better provide the needs for the students in our community and those that decide to go to Garden City Community College. Thanks.
Shanda.
Finances became a big focus for us back in 2020, as David and I both stepped on in an unexpected way because of COVID. Community colleges throughout the state and throughout the country, enrollment was declining, funding availability was in question. So it really forced us to look at finances in a little bit different way. We really focused on building our reserves for that rainy day, because when something like COVID would hit, you didn't know what to expect. So the admin team has done a great job increasing that reserve every single year. And they also went above and beyond using the resources we were used to having from the state and the feds, local taxpayers and whatnot, and have found grants that we didn't know existed four years ago. And so I really appreciate the work that Dr. Ruda and his team has done on that, and it's really helped us grow without asking more from our community. So I'm really proud of that one. Thank you.
Jean.
I believe that proper financial health is very important to the college being able to meet its obligation to the community and to serve its students. I'm familiar with budgets, having been on past boards that have dealt with those, and I know that, that the trustees have a responsibility to the taxpayers, who ultimately foot the bill for all of this, to use those funds responsibly and to make improvements where needed. We also have a responsibility to our students to make access to the college accessible through scholarships and reasonable tuition rates. Another aspect of this is having enough reserves to be able to continue to grow and to enhance the offerings at the college so that we can maintain current technology and make the improvements that we'll need to make in the future. I think part of this is best done by weighing the priorities and balancing the various interests, and that has to be done on a regular basis so that we may make sure that we are using that money wisely. Thank you.
David.
As Shanda said, we look at the financials every month. We expect a 20% reserve or above that, around 23%, I believe. And over the last four years, enrollment has been growing. This year, it's up only 0.02%, which increases the financials. During these four years, we've had over 20 grants and partnerships with local businesses and corporations in town to start up programs. Empirical has been, has given us some money to work on our industrial maintenance. Got money from some of the banks. We've got several donations, so our financials are in good standing right now. And Dr. Ruda has increased the revenue from outside the taxpayers, since taxpayers only are responsible for the property tax. So, but we have started new programs because of that, looking into what the needs are of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Anhelica, we're going to come back around to you now. What are your ideas on how to engage the business What are your ideas on how to engage the business community to help better students for the, excuse me, better help prepare students for the workforce? And what would your role as a trustee be?
As an active member of this community, I observe and hear the needs of our businesses as a business owner in collaborating with some of my husband's encounters. I can use that as influence when developing workforce programs. We encounter in Southwest Kansas many challenges that can be turned into opportunities. As demographics show, my bi-cultural and bilingual expertise makes me uniquely qualified to understand the changing landscape of the community and the tremendous opportunities that are out there. And as you may know, we are a young town, young families and much younger than that workforce of the state. So that would be mainly one of the focuses. And I am very involved and as we are student-focused, I think that it's important to hear the demands. Thank you.
Shanda.
The strategic plan is really the foundation of our progress every year. And that's based on student success, institutional partnerships, human, physical, and financial resources, and sustainable infrastructure. So of the four pillars of our strategic plan, institutional partnerships is part of that living, breathing document that changes every year as we review progress made towards existing goals and making new goals. One thing that we've really done to make sure when we're working on these strategic plans, that we are bringing back information from local employers is we now have advisory committees for each of the different departments around campus. And each trustee is responsible for their particular departments and they meet with the college department as well as local businesses that represent employment needs in that department. And we work with them on what they see their needs to be, what the student outcomes are, are the students successful that you're receiving, and what can we do better going forward? And that's been a big input for us to be able to have that resource.
Jean.
Thank you. I believe the trustee's role is to create ends which focus on this aspect and especially to ensure that all students are well-trained and well-educated in whatever their course of study is. Secondly, I think that partnering with business and industry to provide workforce training like the college has done with Empirical is very important. We can seek out other opportunities for this. Additionally, there is a training, ongoing education of employees such as the college does with Tyson and other opportunities for working students. I think we need to continue to seek out what the needs are at each of the businesses and industries in our area and to also work with our development organizations to ensure that they are aware of what services the college can provide in bringing business here. Thank you.
David.
Can you repeat the question?
What are your ideas on how to engage the business community to help better prepare students for the workforce? And what would your role as a trustee be?
Like Shanda said, advisory councils are made up of the business partners. And they meet once every semester and come together and select different things that they'd like to see from the college to help. Now, I know the college has gone out, we're starting an apprenticeship program with the business communities. I know, like I said, I was there for 10 years and as a criminal justice instructor, we had students participate with the police department, sheriff's office as ride-alongs, playing bad guys. And because of that partnership, at one time, over 50% of the patrol officers were from the college. So we know, working with everybody, just like the Builders Association helped with the carpentry program, and it continues to grow. Because we see that need, that they need more people out there to build these houses that the town needs so we can get employees in. We just look at that and see what we can afford to do.
Sean.
Can you repeat the question, please?
What are your ideas on how to engage the business community to help better prepare students for the workforce? And what would your role as trustee be?
Right now, you can drive around town and there's Help Wanted signs everywhere. We bring in the technical classes, the John Deere program, the Woods program, the welding program, the criminal justice program. Do we need another program we could possibly add? I mean, I know many businesses here that are lacking help and are drastically needing help. So we just need to have our kids that are leaving Garden City Community College trained and prepared to go to the workforce. Thank you.
Shanda, we'll start with you on this one. What is the role of the board in determining if an existing program should be expanded or a new program implemented?
That would be part of that strategic planning that we do annually and we work with, everyone across campus participates from program reviews, how many students, what enrollment is, what their success rate is. All of that feeds into reviews by the department head, what's working, what's not, and what they see on the horizon. And using those, that strategic plan, we go back every year and see whether it is. And every department reports out to the Board of Trustees on a rotating basis to let us know where they're at and what they see their needs to be. And again, those advisory committees feed right back into that too, because we take that information and utilize that as that institutional partnership component of what we hear is needed and what is feasible for us to do. There's, there's a lot of things we'd love to do, not always feasible, and we have some great admin teams that bring back the statistics and numbers that really help make a decision on whether it would work for our community in a fiscally responsible way.
Jean.
Thank you. I think the role of the board in determining if existing programs should be expanded or new programs should be held should be to make sure that we have asked and listened to all of the opinions that are out there. We do have advisory committees at the college, but perhaps they need to be expanded or perhaps we need to incorporate the views of additional individuals. I think if we get an expanded cross-section of the community, we're apt to get some new ideas. And so I would encourage us to perhaps look a little more broadly to make sure that we're covering all aspects of need in our community. Thank you.
David.
Can you repeat the question, please?
What is the role of the board in determining if an existing program should be expanded or a new program implemented?
Unfortunately, a lot of it comes down to finances. How much is it going to cost to support that program? How much, you know, is it financially feasible to get the students in here for that program? To see if we need to increase it? I know there are several programs that we've talked about expanding. One is a truck driving course. We partnered with Seward County. They're going to have students up here, they're going to provide the instructor, and it's not going to cost the college anything. So we're providing new programs, again, looking at the bottom line. We, like Shanda says, we get a program review every five years on these programs. We have to determine if there's enough people to be in the program. You know, if it drops below and you only have two or three students in there, we've got to look at the cost of the instructor, the cost of the college, and whether we need to get rid of that program. And again, looking at the finances, do we have help from the partners to expand this program? That is, you know, the board looks at all those factors.
Sean.
In the last year, few years here at the college, they've expanded several programs. Again, we have to go out to our community and see what we need. Do we need bricklayers? Do we need linemen? Do we need the construction workers? They've added the, we still need technicians in the auto programs. All the car dealerships here in town need mechanics. The John Deere program is a great program, but are they short of technicians? They are all short of technicians. Can we expand these programs? They're doing a great job expanding these programs. But as growing, we just have to get out in our community and see what is needed. I mean, the lineman, Wheatland Electric are putting out ads for help now, and they've never had to put out help. So could we get a journeyman lineman class brought in? I know some of the programs, like I said, are there, can they be brought along a little better? They could possibly do that. But we just have to get out in the community and make sure we understand what the needs are for our area. And when I say our area, it's the 40-mile radius, just not the five-mile radius.
And Helica.
I feel like a lot of the decision-making is based on the four pillars of the college, the student success, institutional partnerships, human, physical, financial resources, sustainable infrastructure. As board members, I feel it's important to look at the big picture, long-term benefits, what partnerships can be built, what do we have, the quarterly goals that they've talked about are very important. But hearing the community communication, I feel, is the key for this, to hear the needs in our workforce and using that communication. Thank you.
Jean, we'll start with you on this one. During our legislative coffees, our state legislators were questioned about how they would balance their personal beliefs against the beliefs of their constituents when voting on issues. How would you balance the two as a member of the board?
I think balancing your personal beliefs as well as your, against the board's beliefs. I think having diversity on the board is part of what makes the board strong. And I think it's important that board members feel free to respectfully discuss things which they may have differences of opinions about. But I think that going on to that, that once a decision is made, that every board member would be accepting of that decision and would be publicly supportive of that decision. So I don't think it's so matter, it's as much a matter of balancing a personal decision as discussing your personal beliefs, but also being willing to accept the board decision that was made.
I'm sorry, I'm going to clarify for everyone that question because it may have been worded eloquently, and I apologize. Essentially, what we are trying to ask is how would you balance your own views with the voter views? So Jean, if you'd like to clarify on that, I'll give you another 30 seconds.
Well, in balancing my views with the voters' views, I believe that the trustees represent the voters and represent the owners of the institution. I think you take your cue from the views of the owners and try to serve as a voice for them on the trustee board.
Thank you. David.
I have to agree with Jean. We're voted in, so we're responding to the stakeholders or voters. As far as my personal beliefs, I'm sure during the discussion of whatever topic it is, my personal belief may come out and we'll discuss it, but I'll still stand by what the public wants me to do. They voted me in and I'm their voice, so my personal belief would be going out the window at that point in time.
Sean.
You listen to your voters. There's never a wrong or, you can, when you vote, I've voted several times on different boards, no, and the board voted yes. It's how you bring your perspective to your voters. Your voters, you listen to your voters and you understand what they want. When your personal beliefs, like I said, like David said, sometimes your beliefs have to go out the window. This is what people that you visited with and what they wanted. Sometimes you have to vote the way they want. But if it's your personal beliefs, you can always, you have to think about it and you have to look yourself in the mirror every once in a while and say no, even if the board says yes. And you stick to that and whatever the board says, you stick to their opinion and make sure that opinion is the way it's going to be. Thank you.
And Helica.
I think I've stated before that regardless of my personal beliefs, it's important to stand behind as a one-board. And not necessarily that you have to put on a fight with the constituents, but explaining perhaps what the decision-making was would be beneficial communication, always keeping the lines of communication open. So my views will not interfere in any way, but explaining will probably be the best way to handle that.
Shanda.
You do have to be conscious of, are you letting personal bias make your decisions for you? And that's sometimes easier said than done, but as long as you keep that forefront of mind. But in my opinion, I'm here to represent all stakeholders, not just the voters, and that includes the community, Southwest Kansas as a whole, the parents, students, faculty, staff, not just the taxpayers. Because I know the taxpayers, if I thought of them only, were cutting your taxes, but then I have students going without funding, without programs. So you have to weigh all of those things, not just the voters. I want every stakeholder group to feel like their voices are heard and they can trust that the collective best interest will guide the decisions that are made by the trustees. Thank you.
David, you're up next. What role should trustees take in strategic planning and setting the vision of the future of Garden City Community College?
The trustee should work with the president. Since he's our employee, he works with his council. They come up with a plan and the trustees help develop or ask questions, whether we need something else in that plan, do we need to increase it, do we need to decrease it in this area? But that plan has to be a continuing program plan that works. It's a livable document. You know, we have to go by finances, we have to look at students. Do we have the capabilities in the classrooms? Do we have the space? You know, we're getting to the point that the college is running out of space. So this strategic planning is part of our annual review with the president, and we have to just add our two cents to it and rely on him and his staff for the majority of it. Thank you.
Sean.
Like David said, you have to work with your president and his team that he has put together. And we got to make sure that as a trustee, you know, like he said, have the space, have the teachers, have the, have it all implemented to make sure that we can make this a feasible move forward with the college. Being on the athletic board, we've seen some of the growth that we needed to do with the athletic side of the school versus even the educational part of the building. And we've seen some growth. They've grown new buildings, new John Deere programs. They've grown new buildings, new John Deere programs. The criminal justice program my children went through is phenomenal. So like I said, just visit with Dr. Ruda and visit with him and his team and try to work it out and see what we can implement toward the college.
And Helica.
It's important to work with the president, as they said, for strategic planning in setting the future of GCCC, but also with both students and teachers in mind, exercising what the responsibility of those funds will be and being, knowing where to allocate any of that fundraising. The quarterly goals set aside are important to review. So part of, I feel, the board's responsibility is to definitely work with the president and his leaders in setting the strategic plan. Thank you.
Shanda.
The four basic pillars, as I've suggested before, are, of the strategic plan are student success, institutional partnerships, human, physical, and financial resources, along with sustainable infrastructure. So throughout the strategic planning process, everyone on campus is involved and we have a forum on the website. They can submit for their input on that. So all the ends should be included in those four pillars of the strategic plan. And really, the role of the Board of Trustees is, it's linked to making sure it's a continuous improvement, and that includes the board reviews of the different programs, both academically and non-academically, and the employability skills. We also need to make sure that the strategic plan is linked to the overall financial planning of the institution. Does it work in the budget? Do we have the funding? What other resources? Do we need to achieve these ends? And this is where the Board of Trustees have an opportunity to suggest strategic planning initiatives that they may think is important for our admin team to research and look into.
Thank you. I believe that the role of trustees in strategic planning, as was said, is to work carefully and closely with the president and those other members of the team to help develop that plan, to ensure that all aspects are considered and that the plan, as it's ultimately determined, is sustainable for a long period of time, for a long term, and is also consistent with the budget, availability of funds, and meets the needs of the community and the partnerships that we have. Thank you.
Sean. What do you see as the community college essentially getting right at this time and what areas do you believe need improvement?
Can you repeat that?
What do you see essentially as what the college is getting right or doing well right now and what areas need improvement?
Well, there are several programs they've added. Like I said, we work with the, from the Holcomb side to the Garden City side, and they've added the wood program. They've added the automotive program. Could probably use a little bit of twisting, but the John Deere program is top-notch, one of the best in the country. Welding program, again, sending welders out, making $25 to $35 an hour from the get-go. The police department, the criminal justice program, which has done a phenomenal job with Brandy and knows teachers there. My son is now in the computer programming and we brought in the computers and he's finding that he can use both of those in his job. And, but no, as far as programs coming in, they're doing a phenomenal job.
And Helica.
I feel that the college has done a great job in their communication, their marketing. The infrastructure that is going up right now with the STEM, reaching out to the stakeholders, they're doing a phenomenal job with some of the fundraising. What can the college do better, in my personal view, is perhaps educating some of the community members that have no voice at the table and bringing more resources for those that have language barriers or other barriers they're facing. Essentially, it's important, it's important to go out there, knock the door. We still deal with the non-traditional students that don't have the means perhaps to the internet. They're doing a great job with their social media and everything that is brought up on us. I still learn the tweeting and all that good stuff. But I feel like we can do a better job for those that have little or no voice or language barriers. Thank you.
I think the growth that Garden City Community College has had and the expansions of the programs and finding the financial backing to achieve those goals has been phenomenal. Another thing that I'm really proud of is our enrollment has continued to increase these last few years, when most, if not all, community colleges in the state of Kansas have had a decline. We are the oldest-serving community college in the state of Kansas. There's always room for improvement. Preparing for the future and what comes next, there is no end to that goal. That grows and changes by the day. We are working on actively seeking some community feedback from some underserved areas of the community and have been working to bring some representatives and members of different segments of our community in to come and speak with us as a board to let us know how we can better serve them. Going forward, I think infrastructure is going to be an issue that we'll have to address as dorms need upgrades and plumbing, heating, those kind of things. So watching the master facilities plan, I think, will be can, an important priority that we'll have to keep an eye on.
Jean.
I think the college does so many things right that it's really hard to say what specific areas should, should need improvement. One of the things that I think that's especially important, we have so many new programs that really meet the needs of our community, and those are things that the college does correctly and does very well. Our STEM success center is an example of that, where we're on the leading edge of technology in educating these students. We also have a very good student focus, in my opinion. We have kept the tuition at a reasonable amount and there are a number of scholarships available to students. And we've made it easy for students to be able to transfer those credits to four-year institutions. The college also does a great job of reaching out to high schools to appoint the high school students with what opportunities are available at the college and to encourage them to look at the college for further training. I think it's important that we, we continue to try to seek out additional individuals who may benefit from the opportunities at the college. Adult students, non-traditional students, employed students. I think all of those will benefit our, our community. Thank you.
David.
I have to agree with Jean as far as, you know, saying what's done right out there is kind of hard to do, because a lot of it is right. The college looks at students first. They work with, like I said, the STEM program, which we've started up cybersecurity. You've got the welding, you've got the criminal justice, John Deere, all those are very successful programs. We've started the, you know, Builders Association with Carpentry Program, Industrial Maintenance for Tyson and Empirical. The one thing they've done for the students is they've come and made agreements with different sources to have 24-hour medical care available to the students free of charge. It may be over Zoom or the technical means, but it's there. We also work with other high schools. We have got a grant and have Zoom classes in several of the high schools around the community that's in our area, where they can send, students can be there and do to take dual-credit classes. But the biggest thing that we'll need to work on again is infrastructure and getting classroom space.
And Helica, next question is for you. Describe what your process will be to determine how you will vote on matters before the board and how will you approach controversial and complicated issues?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Certainly. Describe what your process will be to determine how you will vote on matters before the board and how you will approach controversial and complicated issues.
That's a tough one. I think one of the things that is repeated often in marketing and everything that comes from Garden City Community College is student success, student focus. So how would I, how would I, I'm lost. I think what, what would be best for the college would be, of course, my initiative, thinking process on how I would react. What's best for the college, what's best for the taxpayers, what's best for the students, what's best for the teachers? I think it's one of the things that I would probably focus on, on helping with the decision-making.
I am a very detail-oriented person and I'm not afraid to ask questions and speak my mind. And I really thoroughly research all decisions that, that come in front of us. My approach to decision-making, I evaluate the issues brought before us in three different ways, really. One, as a taxpayer, is it fiscally responsible? Does it benefit the college and the community we serve? Does it just, does the expenditure justify any tuition increases and can we maintain that as affordable as possible? Second, as a community member and business owner, are we serving the educational needs and workplace training, technical training needs of the region to support our growing economy? And most importantly, from the student perspective, does it serve our current and our future students in the best way possible? And I think looking at every decision from all three of those ways, whether controversial or mundane, is the best way to approach each one of those. Thank you.
Jean.
Thank you. I would agree. I think it's important for all of the trustees, for me personally, to examine all aspects of any issue that we are called upon to decide, to do the research and to review all of the materials that are available on the topic. I think considering the community's needs and how the stakeholders feel is important, as well as the ability to help students be successful and whether the particular topic will be sustainable financially and in our community long-term. Thank you.
I look, I can look at each decision and I'll research the topic that we're talking about. Example, we wanted, the athletic department wanted to remodel the athletic trainer room. I went over and I toured that and saw that it was about 30 years old. I wouldn't want to get taped in that room. And again, research. Also look at feedback from the community. Listen to the word from the other trustees, their discussions. Is there any state statutes or laws that need to be considered in this decision? And so again, total research.
Sean.
Repeat the question, please.
Describe what your process will be to determine how you will vote on matters before the board and how you will approach controversial and complicated issues.
First of all, you do your research, you, you talk to, you do your follow-up, and when you do, go in there and you make, you keep your emotions in, out of the voting. And if it's a controversial issue, had them before, you just, you sit there and you think of all the people that it's involving and responsibilities of those individuals that this is, was the issue. And you keep the, like I said, you keep the emotions out and you visit with the other trustees and you place your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Shanda, next question to you. Against what metrics will you assess the college's leadership's attainment of key goals that are set by the board?
That all goes back to our strategic plan, which I won't go into anymore for you, but also our policy governance. And every month, we get another report from Dr. Ruda with the help of his admin team on whether he's meeting the expectations of that policy. And those policies vary from campus safety to student success. And those reports are very thorough. Anytime there's any information that we would like more of, whether it be statistics or information from around campus, that's part of that policy review. And we add that and change that in the policy and request that from Dr. Ruda and the admin team, and they provide that. Then we can better assess what goals are being met, how we'd like to go forward, or whether the monitoring report is, is adequate as it is and they're achieving their goals without any changes.
Jean.
I believe the policy governance provides all of the structure to be able to do that. It allows the trustees to utilize reports and references from internal sources to assess the goals, as well as those from external sources, such as an audit. In addition, I believe the trustees can utilize their own direct inspection of whatever is being looked at in terms of that goal. Thank you.
David.
Can you repeat, please?
Against what metrics will you assess the college's leadership's attainment of key goals that are set by the board?
We utilize the policy governance and the ends that we have set. Like Shanda says, we get a monthly report on certain means that have been attained or utilized by the president and his staff to make that mean end. And if we have questions on it, we can ask the president to improve on that. We also utilize those monitoring reports as part of his yearly evaluation. We don't just rely on that, we rely on factors from the community, staff, faculty, in doing that evaluation.
Thank you. Sean.
Like I said, like Jean and David both said, and Shanda, this is back to the strategic planning. But when you go back in there and you listen to your president and like he's, he'll get your reports and you have an external and internal audits that keep things lined up, also with his team, you can get all the information that you possibly could need and make sure everything is correct. Thank you.
And Helica.
I will piggyback to everything you've all said. I think that meeting the numbers, the strategic planning, financial reports, reviews, annual numbers, quarterly numbers, I think that looking at the reports will be definitely some sort of a matrix that we would have to look at. I'm not familiar with it, but for me, that would be definitely what's worked and what's not worked in order to determine the key items that we would have to make decisions on. Thank you.
Jean. What policies and school-wide changes would you advocate to implement to address the physical and emotional health of students at the college?
I believe one of the most important things that the school has recently incorporated is the, the virtual is the virtual healthcare opportunities that are available to all students. I think continuing this would be an important aspect of maintaining student health, and I would like to see that occur. I also think that the counseling services that are provided through the school are also very helpful to deal with student health. I think as a result of the pandemic, students have experienced more anxiety and other mental health issues, and those things would be greatly helpful in relieving that. Thank you.
David.
I don't know that I'd change anything. I encourage you to keep up what we're doing. They work with Genesis on mental health and also any medical and that other computerized program that they have, which I didn't name of it. But they also work with St. Catherine's on lowering the cost. I think it costs $10 for a student to get seen up there at St. Catherine's. So everything they're doing right now is focused on the mental health and the physical health of the students. And it seems to be working. They have a great increase on that program being used.
Sean.
Again, with Jean and David, glad y'all all answered those questions for me. Virtual healthcare is phenomenal with the school and the counseling programs for the mental health. COVID is not much fun, kids stuck in dorms and not knowing what to do and how to do things and lose their sociabilities. The social aspect of these health programs, and especially the counseling program, is a wonderful practice to have and with the ability to have for our students and making sure they're safe and healthy to learn. Thank you.
And Helica.
I feel like if we continue with the partnerships that we have in the community, we'll continue to help with that emotional support for both the staff and the students, reaching out to the faculty perhaps, and performing surveys with the students on what maybe we're lacking of, what do we need. We have a great relationship with Lebof County, the hospital, Genesis. As everyone has said, I feel that if we continue with those partnerships, we're doing it right as we are reaching out and focusing on what is that we're missing in order to help with that. Mental health would be a priority.
Shanda.
We do have some great on-campus and virtual options that have already been discussed. I think what's important has been making sure the students are aware that these resources exist to them, because too often, resources are underutilized because the students don't know they exist. And with the addition of our Buster app that the students can use to find out information on all kinds of happenings around campus, I'm hoping that more students that need these resources will know they exist and be able to utilize them to the fullest extent.
David, do you have any personal or professional relationships that could become a conflict of interest while serving as a trustee, and how would you handle it?
No, I don't. At one time, we had my brother, who works in security, had put in a proposal for cameras that the college was asking for bids on. I excused myself from the room while that was being read and voted on. At this moment, I do not have any conflicts.
Sean.
No, ma'am, I do not. And if I did, anything ever does arise, like I said, you just have to adjourn yourself from the room and vote on it, you know, take your vote as a nay.
And Helica.
I do not have any personal or professional interest that would be a conflict serving as a board of trustees.
Shanda.
I do not, if it was ever to arise any kind of conflict with our family business, again, recusing myself and letting the rest of the board handle that decision, so I remove myself from the conversation and the vote.
Jean.
I don't have any personal, professional relationships that would compromise me. If I did, I would also recuse myself. So thank you.
That concludes the question-answer session of tonight's forum. Candidates, take a deep breath. We're almost done. We thank you for your time this evening and willingness to be a part of this event. At this time, we will invite you to provide your one-minute closing statement, beginning with Sean.
I appreciate you being here. My key did a phenomenal job, and Helica, Shanda, Jean, David, y'all are all wonderful candidates for this people voting. You're not going to go wrong with any of these people that are at the table. Dr. Ruda has been in public here. He's done a phenomenal job with the college, and it's grown advantageously toward, he's done a phenomenal job, let's just say that. The Board of Trustees that are on it right now are doing a wonderful job. I appreciate everybody being here, like I said earlier. And like I said, the voters, you're not going to go wrong with any of the five up here. Thank you.
And Helica.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, everyone at the table. Thank you for those that are running to be reelected and for your service. Thank you all that put this together, Chamber of Commerce, and all of those involved. I, if I voted in, look forward to continue to serve my community, as I have done for the probably past 20 years. It is my pleasure to be here at the table, and I look forward to all of these. Thank you.
Shanda.
I've been honored over the last four years that our community has trusted us individually and collectively as a Board of Trustees to represent them in helping grow Garden City Community College in order to help grow Southwest Kansas. And I would be honored to have another four years to continue the work we've gotten progress. We really do have an amazing community and a lot of support. And it really means a lot that our voters and stakeholders come to things like this and have questions that they submit to you and get involved in the process. And I'm really thankful for that. Thank you.
Jean.
Thank you to the chamber for providing this opportunity and to those listening in person and online. I support excellence in education and training, a focus on student success, partnerships with business and industry, a strong relationship with the community, the forward vision and growth of the college, and transparency and accountability. I have well over two decades of experience in a variety of roles and perspectives as a board member, instructor, parent, student, and community member, allowing me to be a strong and effective voice for our community, business, and industries. I believe in the lifelong learning which the college provides. Through this, our students, community members, and businesses will grow, transform, and compete with the best of the best, making that Southwest Kansas economy strong, vibrant, and responsive to future trends and changes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am honored to serve, I would be honored to serve as trustee. Thank you.
David.
Prior to being elected to the Board of Trustees in 2020, I spent many years observing the trustees. I attended many meetings, and I believe the current Board of Trustees are the most cohesive bunch that I've ever observed. Their first and most important priority is the students. We are in a great era of the college. Dr. Ruda and his staff has demonstrated over the past four years, receiving numerous recognitions for the nursing program, John Deere program, been named Top 10 Best Colleges in Kansas, Best Place to Work, even been recognized by the Kansas Board of Regents. So although these accomplishments are not mine, it has been a great pleasure to be part of the team as a trustee. I believe in my experience as a student, community stakeholder, faculty manager, and trustee, given the variety of experience, can you make quality decisions? Am I the best for the community? Who knows? Last thing I have to say is get out and vote. Every vote counts. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes tonight's program. Please join me again in thanking our candidates for their time. Please join us for the City of Garden City Commission Forum tomorrow, October 3, at 6:00 p.m., right here at the City Administration Building. That event will be streamed on the City of Garden City's Facebook page. We do have a change for our Thursday forum, which is the USD 457 Board of Education. It will actually be held here in the City Administration Building, beginning at 6:00 p.m., and will be streamed, I believe, on the City of Garden City's Facebook page as well. Just as a reminder, the general election is set for Tuesday, November 7, and the voter registration deadline is on October 17. Early in-person voting begins October 23, with the county clerk allowing for extended evening and Saturday times beginning October 26. No reason to be able to miss just one day. There's plenty of opportunity to vote. We encourage the citizens of Garden City and Finy County to vote. Thank you all again. Have a wonderful evening.